Welcome to the June, regular June meeting of the Murphburg Historic Zoning Commission. Ms. Johnson, do we have a quorum?
Uh, Ms. Davis.
I'm sorry, Ms. Davis.[41.12][41.12](Laughter) I'm so sorry.[43.46][43.46](Laughter) I'll never live that down, will I?
It'll take awhile.[48.01][48.01](Laughter)
You should have received copies of the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or additions that need to be made to the minutes? Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright. We have one item of new business to consider today. Robert, I believe I'll let you present that to us.
Okay, Vice Chairman Cross. Our agenda item today is the address is 602 East Main Street. The applicants are Nina and Eric Egley. They're requesting to repair and replace damaged porch materials, replace vinyl siding with cement fiber board in a style that was found underneath the siding that's currently existing on the house. They would like to replace windows on the north and the south and the west sides of the house. And finally, they would like to paint the house when the project is completed. This house is located at the southeast corner of East Main Street and University Street. The house was constructed in 1900 and remodeled again in 1980 in a vernacular style of architecture with classical returns, multiple gables, in a stick style decoration with one and a half stories and clapboard, excuse me, exterior covering. The house is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants, they're continuing their quest for restoration of this house and they recently found out that one of the porches that was earlier renovated was not properly constructed, not properly reconstructed. As a result of that, they've got severe water damage that's occurring and it's causing extensive damage to at least the two front porches and their floors. After consulting with a roofing contractor, they believe the problems can be traced back to the addition of the gable roofs that were applied many years ago to those flat roofs of the two porches located on the northeast and northwest sides of the house. Contractor believes if the gabled roofs on these porches are removed and restored back to the original flat roof, then the water damage can be eliminated. The applicants, they've taken photographs of what they believe to be remnants of the original flat roof underneath the current gable roof. And these are also included in your agenda package for your review. And the applicants will also be able to address what they found that probably haven't been been able to be photographed as well. Due to the possibility of further water damage, staff approved a building permit from the codes department in order for them to proceed with the protection of the open construction on the site due to the consistent rain we've had lately. The northwest porch is revealing similar damage as the materials were removed from the other, just like the other porch. The applicants have additional photographs and an explanation of their proposal for the damage, for the remediation. In addition to, once the repairs for the water damage is done, they would like to replace the existing exterior covering of the house with one that is more closely, that more closely resembles the original covering of the house, which is a, which they believe is a fish scale siding. They would like also to replace the vinyl siding with cement fiber board that is a fish scale appearance. In addition, let's see, in the photographs that I've included in your agenda materials, they show the, at one time, the house was a fraternity house with the fish scale siding. And the applicants would also like to use the stick style elements to match what they found underneath the existing vinyl siding. Photographs of the fish style, the fish scale cement, well, excuse me, the photograph of the fish style cement fiber board is included in your agenda package. I'm not exactly sure if that made it in your agenda package. I have a sample on the board out here that we can, that we can see. The trim for the siding will be, I think it's called, a Meritech treated exterior composite material. And I have samples of that that I can pass for your review. The applicants also plan to replace several windows that are located on the south and the west and the north sides of the house. One window on the south side of the house is in, which is in the kitchen, they would like to remove the smaller window and replace it with one that is similar in size to the neighboring windows on that side and the west side also. There's a drawing in your agenda materials that show a before and after representation of the kitchen window, which is also included in your package. The large window that's facing Main Street, they would like to replace with a large double hung window. And the remaining windows on the west side, they're considering to have a, they would like to have an interior storm window that's going to be added to the existing windows. On the second floor, all the windows will be replaced with double hung windows except for the small window above the kitchen, which is going to be a custom window in the same dimension that is currently existing on that side. The windows, they're Marvin, Marvin style, Marvin brand window. There'd be a wooden window. And I have brochures that I can, that I can pass out and you can, you can review. For safety reasons, like I mentioned earlier, they would like to add storm windows to the large window on the western side facing University Street. The applicants also proposed to consolidate the electric meters, which are, and the weather heads that are on the south side of the house, which is adjacent to the kitchen, current kitchen window. They would also like to have, to add three exterior outlets, one on each porch. And once the project is completed, they'd like to have the house painted. Like I say, they, they run into several issues with weather-related damage, which is, is going to have to be repaired before they, to move forward. And the applicants are in the, in the audience to answer any questions you may have and I'll be also available to answer any questions. And at this time, I would like to pass along some, some of these materials that you can take a look at. The first one is that Meritech. And then followed by a small sample of the fish scale siding. And I have, in your agenda materials, I have a brochure, a copy of the brochure for the window and I can pass that along too.
Okay, would the applicants like to speak, speak to us? Just come to the podium and state your name, please.
And one thing we do hope is that instead of using the fish scale fiber board, that we'll be able to, there will be enough of the current old fish scale intact that we can save that. That would be our, our hope. First line. First line, we just want to fix what's messed up.
Do any of the members of the council have any questions?
Do you have any photographs of the original porches?
I do not. That's as far as we've found, but when we, when, when some of the rotten material was taken down, you can see the slope of the fish scale trim and it does follow along. So we were proposing to follow that contour that follows right along the old.
So you would take off the gabled pieces and then the existing porch roof was sloped, it looks like, right? It's not.
The porch that goes Main Street to University is sloped and that slope will be maintained. That won't change. On the other, the other side porch, it looks like the roofs were flat.
Okay.
I suspect part of that was previously a porch that was converted to a room, but the front area where you can see the original siding of the house, it is flat.
Okay.
Could we go through the pictures that you have available? I think it would help the commission.
What we have here is the, the porches on the east side of the house, the one that was initially found to be damaged with water. And you can see the gable, it's a slight gable pitch roof. It's not very steep at all. Excuse me. And that, that led into do some more exploring to find out what, what else could be wrong. And this is the front porch facing East Main Street. This is the rear side of the house with the kitchen windows. There's a small kitchen, small window up above it. They're wanting to replace the double window here with the, with the larger window.
Would be consistent then with the window sides, sizes around the house?
This again is the eastern porch that shows a little bit of the side and that gable. You can see where that gable's down into, toward the house. This is the east side with a rear southeast side of it. And it shows some water damage from the work that was done just a couple of years ago, which is going to have to be replaced.
That's nine years ago.
Nine years ago, well.
Still wasn't time for doing this again.
Yeah. And that's just another version, a view of it from the south side. You can see where some of the wood is, is kind of new, but the other has rotted underneath. Alright, that's the same picture. This is the, I think this is the front porch after some materials were taken off. That shows the gable roof. And this one you're going to leave is the gable roof, is that correct?
It's going to have the same slope.
Okay, it'll, it'll be the same slope. They just found some damage and they're going to have to replace.
The structural elements are also rotted, not just the porch.
This is the, the side, the east side porch view of, oh Lord, okay, some of the work that was done. And this is brochures, which I passed out to depict the windows that they're going to be using.
Did I understand, Robert, or you say that there are other photographs that have been taken since this packet came out?
Well, the last few pictures that I've shown, they were, they showed just the damage of those, just those are the recent pictures. Yeah, and it's probably hard to get a photograph of what is in there in the dark, like say, underneath those porch, the roofs. But the best we could take, you know, the best pictures I could take are on the ground and it just shows the kind of damage that was done. And the applicant states that the, there, you can see the dentil, the molding that was on previously before they added this, this roof, porch, porch roof.
The fish scale.
And, oh.
When I sent in the material for the proposal, we didn't know we had that part yet, so I didn't have any pictures of that.
Mr. Chair, being that there's several items here to go over and approve, I would think it'd be best if we did them item by item. I know I had some comments. Could we do perhaps the east porch? When you look at the photograph here and you see this, this slope, is that tied to that photograph, to that slope is this front?
Yes.
And this is the side that they just sort of built up to it?
Well, those, the horizontal pieces that you see there are pieces that the construction workers put on just to keep the roof up.
Oh, my God.
Those are, are just for safety.
When you say it'll have a flat roof, surely it'll have some kind of pitch to.
It will have very little pitch, actually. It's.
At least a quarter inch per foot or something to get the water on?
Yes, it's the, sort of the minimum pitch they can do, but we've had a roofing company come out that specializes in waterproof membranes and, and.
So this will be a membrane roof? This will be sheet rubber?
It will be, yes.
Or sheet plastic TPO or EPDM?
It's, it is decathane elastometric moisture triggered waterproof barrier.
Will this be just self-adhered or will it be ballasted?
I think it is self-adhered.
Okay, so it won't have rocks on top of it?
No.
Okay.
It has a, it will be sealed with a coating that has some texture to it so that if you're on the roof to do some kind of maintenance, you won't have a slippery surface.
So you'll, you'll build up this flat roof perhaps with some kind of insulation to get the quarter inch per foot for the membrane so that it pitches to the gutter?
I guess they will. They've worked out how they would get that pitch.
Okay. So basically that, the east porch, I would call it low slope instead of flat because flat's just going to simply hold water. Then let's go to the, the west porch, the front one then, what I call the front porch. Am I to understand that you're taking off this gable that's over the entry?
No. We're not taking off that gable.
So this, that porch will stay pretty much the way it is?
Yes. It will have to be, we're having to rebuild parts of it that are rotted, but the appearance should be the same. Now, it should have, we're planning to put the same membrane on that roof because the slope of the roof as it is now does not conform to shingle manufacturer's requirements for a guarantee. It's not sloped enough for them to hold a guarantee for that, for that roof.
To get the warranty is a real crucial thing. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to talk about the roofs, to understand them better. So you're going to put this membrane roof up there. What color will be the finished treatment?
We are going to, they, it comes in several colors and we're going to try to match the upper shingles as best we can. I think it'll be sort of a gray brown. I'm really sort of day by day as I discover what's being needed, trying to look into what I need to, to learn.
I mean, I think I understand, you want to like maybe to go subject by subject and then approve it and then move on, or how do you want to do this? That might be the easiest.
I do have one question about the east gable. We have this on the towers that, and that shows, was that a room? Was that an enclosed?
Well, the frat house closed that in to be their TV room.
Okay. When was this photograph taken? Do you have any idea?
I think it's written on the back of the photograph. Like sometime in the 70s, 74, something like that.
Were all of these old black and white photographs taken at the same time? This one, the one is labeled 1975.
I don't know that they're exactly the same time, but they're all in a similar time period.
That's that porch right there.
But, but they enclosed that.
Jim, what do you think the original roofing material was on that porch?
Well, I would venture that probably the porch, the east porch in particular, was probably a metal roof. And that's why I was asking the questions of what material. My concern is the visibility of it.
That's my concern too.
I've seen where they put rolled asphalt roofing there too, but I don't know about the warranty on that either. I think asphalt shingles have to have a three or I think a four and 12 pitch to get a warranty. And the EPDM can get as flat as, as quarter inch per foot or even flatter, to be honest. But my concern is just the visibility of it. If you were matching, if you're, if you're mopping it, it then therefore has sort of a texture, it'll become more monolithic. If it was just self-adhered EPDM, you're going to see every place, there're like little spots every so many feet, 18 inches to a foot or whatever, that you actually nail it or screw it into the substrate, the decking, and you would see it. So putting a, a, a mopped, applied finish to the top will make it more monolithic and you won't really see that. So it would help a great deal if you did do that.
It is not supposed to be visible and it, it is not supposed to have a shiny surface and, I don't think it's going to be very visible on, on the east side.
Y'all have been working on this for awhile. You came up with, when the car hit your porch and my heart went out to you then. And I know it's, it's a project in, in the works and you're doing it as, as, as you can. And I applaud that you're doing it. I guess one question is, I look at your roof, the shingle that you're matching and it's got staining on it. It looks like it's got mildew on it and at some point you're going to have to replace that. So you're committing perhaps.
What, what?
When I look at the streaks.
I think.
That's, that's the roof you're taking off, but this looks.
I think that's before the first roofing project. I think that's before we.
That's the current shingle?
I think that's before we.
That's an earlier photograph.
Roofed it the first time.
Okay.
Wherever there could be the metal, it was on those.
It could be, I don't know, but.
So you have a relatively new roof then in your matching.
It's nine years old.
So are you changing the pitch of the roof from the pitch that we see now, the flat roof portion? Is it going to be lower than that?
The west side will be the same as it is now.
Okay.
On the, what I would call the corner, L-shaped porch will stay the same.
The university, the university, main.
The side's going to be the same.
Yeah.
It should be, it's going to be the same.
The only porches I understand that you're going to make flat is the east porch.
Well, actually, most of that roof is flat. Only the very front section has that gable. And where the gable goes back, all of that water has just poured into the, the corner of the structure.
Right above the door?
Mm-hmm.
The corner right above that porch door.
But it's really the, the old, there's an old metal roof that's covered up, some shingle roofs that are covered up, some asphalt. It's, it's multi, multi-layered what's up there now.
I think you just answered our question there when you said there's an old metal roof. That's what I suspect. That roof and the east, the west porch, north and west porch were probably metal roof as well. That's what I would have guessed.
I have a concern which has more to do with, oh well, you're going to like this than anything. I'm guessing that it was a standing seam roof. That's what I would.
I suspect it was.
That's what I would have expected. And I'm guessing that that would probably, from a, from aesthetic point of view, is going to make you happier than some kind of laid down roof. Because if I can see it now, I'm going to be able, in this photograph, I'm going to be able to see it again. And I don't know, I have, I've put on a lot of roofing. I've put on a lot of standing seam roofing. And I've also used a lot of elastomeric roofing. And I cannot imagine any way in the world that you can put a sheet roof, flexible roof on that porch and be happy with the way it looks. I, I don't.
I think I will be happy with the way it looks.
I'm sorry?
I think I will be happy with the way it looks. And if it performs well, then.
Have you ever seen one?
No, but I'm going to. I'm going to see it. Like I said, I'm, I'm new at all of these and I've gone to the, to the sites and looked at the materials. But I also looked at a metal roof. I've looked at that too as an alternative. And my leaning has been towards the membrane for the fire rating and the warranty and, and I like the breathability from underneath. There're just some, some properties that it has that have appealed to me.
How would the membrane be attached where the roof meets the body of the house? Do you have any idea how they do?
I don't. I, I was trying to, to get the specifications before the meeting, but I couldn't get them before the meeting.
Mr. Chair, if it's like any membrane, it's probably going to have a termination bar. It'll turn up eight inches and then it'll have a shiny metal strip that they screw it in to.
I do know that they.
Unless you put the siding over it.
That they plan to bring it up the side so that then the, the new siding could go on top of it and have a, have a water impervious siding with a water impervious membrane.
I guess if it, speaking for myself, I would rather see the standing seam metal roof as well, but I suppose the mopped roof, if it's of a similar color.
I'm not going to pick something for the house that is totally incongruous with keeping with the appearance of the house.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion, vote on this?
If anybody mo, I'm just, I'm just the moderator. You make the motion and we'll, we'll act on it.
Well, let's, let's do the easy part first. The east, the east porch roof, taking it down to being a near flat, low slope roof with a applied membrane to where it will not be visible, I move to approve.
And we have a motion? And second, is there any discussion? We're just voting on the east porch now. No discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no? Alright, that's passed.
Then we need a motion on the west porch. Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
That would be correct.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Thompson, so we just approved the roof on the.
East.
East porch for the material that they were proposing.
And it would be flat to where it would not be visible from the right of way?
You won't see it at all. You'll be able to see it.
Okay. But this other one doesn't about have the same slope?
No, this would be substantially steeper slope, although it's still.
I had to cross the street and stand on my neighbor's sidewalk to see it well. I mean, I don't think driving by, it's, it's.
We could show a picture of the house that I have on the screen. It'll.
You'll be able to see it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with the house. So I'm, I'm saying that you would think you're proposing.
I was, I, my motion was that the east porch could go to being low, a low slope or near flat roof because it, it would be flatter than this, this side porch here, the west and north porch roof. And you would not see it. I had no, no concerns about that. I understand what the owners are saying about this porch, but it is going to be visible.
It is, it is not very visible, at least for me looking at that picture. That one, the, the part over the gable perhaps, but the other really is.
And you're going to have shingles on the pediment part of it?
No. That's where one of my big water problems is.
Are you speaking of the gable of the entrance, having the shingles?
No.
What would you have there?
The, the membrane.
Oh, you're, you're speaking of the roof? Are you speaking of the gable and the shingle?
No, I'm talking about the roof.
The actual rain surface?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. No, she wants to have membrane, as I understand it, over the gable, all the way around to the side, to where the pavilion sticks out.
It's shingles now? Is that what? What is the surface now on the roof?
The surface is shingles.
It's shingle.
Asphalt. But as I understand it, you can't go back with asphalt shingles because they will not be able to get the warranty on it.
Because of the.
Because it's too flat.
Yeah.
Those should not have been shingles.
Well, I can only give my opinion and I'm just one person, so. I think that putting a membrane roof on that segment of the porch is a mistake. It would, it would without a doubt have had a standing seam metal roof, which is standard in a situation where you have a house like this, where a porch around the front of it is put that has a slope. That would have been the only thing that they would have had access to. Basically, that would have worked when the house was built. You're going to, you're doing a wonderful thing in restoring the house and taking all the vinyl off of it and putting the shingles look back to it. And the fact that you're thinking about recovering existing shingles siding there, I think is tremendous. And I would, from my point of view, I don't think it won't look correct. You will see it. And likely, the surface, maintaining a consistent color on an EPDM surface is virtually impossible. I don't believe it can be done.
Is there any way that, short of waiting for the next meeting next month, I would like to have my house closed up by then, that I could find out what the options were for finishing that? The membrane?
Well, I mean, this is, this is not a vote. I'm just speaking from my experience, both in construction and historic restoration, that I think that would be a mistake.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and venture out and make a motion. We're all struggling with here. Nobody wants to speak, so I'll go ahead and do it. I would make a motion that we approve a standing seam metal roof with a sample of the metal roof to be submitted to the commission before the next meeting for final approval.
I just can't move forward with anything until I get a roof on my house.
No, that's why I'm, that's why I'm making a motion now for metal roof.
So that would before would be any time for me to submit that proposal, I wouldn't have to wait till the meeting a month from now.
That's what I'm suggesting, is that we can get an approval prior to the next month's meeting.
Okay.
That it can be submitted to Robert, who could then send it to the commission and we could get a, either called meeting or canvas or how, what are the legal ramifications of that are. But I think we can get you an answer before the next meeting.
And does everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Unless it's going to be done for staff to approve, we would need to call a special meeting. Canvas meetings are problematic under the open records and open meetings rules.
My concern about the metal roof is that some people would interpret it, it could be a 5V metal roof, which is what I call barn roofing. There are many metal roofs that are out there that claim to be standing seam metal roofs and they are as unattractive as they can possibly be. I could probably point out to you examples, but I'm sure you've all seen them. So we're in, you know, the thing is to try to, I know you, I know you put a lot of love and labor into this whole approach and you wanted to do the right thing, but I just think the metal roof, I understand about doing the mopped applied, it would match the shingles that you have. But I think I would agree, the metal roof, I think, will be visible enough to the point that doing the right material would be best. And so for that reason, why my motion is that, to repeat it, is to make a motion to approve the metal roof with final approval in a called meeting to see what the materials themselves are going to be. Because without seeing it, it's hard to prove the exact material. Unless we want to defer this until we have a called meeting and then approach it then, whatever commission or council feels is correct.
Certainly, it would make sense for the applicant to get some samples to, and let us know as soon as you're going to have those. Let Robert know and then, and we will get a meeting together. We can have a special meeting.
Do we have to, how much notice do we have to give a meeting like that?
I think the only rule is reasonable notice and, well, do you know when you might be able to have the materials?
Well, I know I'll go looking for them tomorrow.
And if we have to advertise, I think we have to have at least three days' notice for a special meeting.
That's what we've done in the past, at least three. Or we could, what I was thinking is, could we set a date and time now? And then that way it's.
Continuation.
Essentially, we would, instead of adjourning the meeting, we would, none of the right words will come out, but we would continue the meeting, finish what else we can today and then continue the meeting until, for instance, next week at this time. And if you don't have the materials by then, we may have to adjourn again, but, or continue again. But we wouldn't actually end this meeting. We'd just take a break at this, from this meeting until another date and time certain.
Jim, you have an objection to allowing Mr. Lewis to approve this based on the.
One of our troubles with the standing seam is that it can look like.
Well, there's really only about three.
There's only about three that are.
There's only about three that, I mean, 5V is not going to work. The roofs that they put on, the canard roofing with the wood, with the battens on the seams is not going to work. The only thing that's going to work is standing seam roof. It's, that's, I mean, that's going to be the best bet. And it can be, I mean, it can be flashed very well and it should be, be fine.
Sure, I mean, I can take a look at it and approve a standing seam roof.
Well, I'm happy to admit my motion that, my motion would then be to approve a standing seam metal roof with administrative review of the final product.
And does everybody understand that motion?
So it's standing, how do you feel about, is that out of order?
No.
How do you feel about this prospect of the standing seam?
Well, I do think about a standing seam roof and part, I guess I'll need to go looking for different types. Standing seam roofs, to me, do most, they make me think of barns. So I'll need to work on what I think about them. And I had thought, you know, I had contacted one company and looked for what I thought would be the best overall way to approach this and get this done and get on to whatever the next step is. And I had felt, I had felt comfortable with that. I like the look of shingles, but shingles are just off the table. So, you know, either, either approach to me is a little different from what I had in my mind when I started.
But are you okay with what they're suggesting?
I will be, I mean, I'll have to look at these particular models that they're suggesting to me before I say yes or no. I'll have to look at those particular types.
This is the way you really think it needs to be done, Mr. Thompson?
I really think the best, I would agree with the vice chair. I think the best response is because of the visibility of the roof, even though, depending on where you're standing, from across the street, wherever, in particular that gable section over the entrance, I think it is, it is visible and it warrants having the appropriate material, which would be a standing seam metal roof.
If they can convince me they can put it on and it won't leak, I'll film it. That's my, I mean, I'm going to tell you, that is my real number one.
Yes, with everything, it's all about installation usually. So that's where, that's always the weakest link. But if installed properly, you will not have a problem.
If I can feel happy with that, then I can probably come to terms with it.
Well, I think, I know that my concern is that I've been involved with enough elastomeric roofing and built-up roofing and several different systems of installation, flat roofs, a little bit of slope and so forth. There's nothing out there that, that is available that's going to get that kind of exposure, that's going to hold any color at all. Whatever you put down, a year from the time you put it down, it's going to look entirely different. And I think you would be, I don't think, I don't think it would look right. You've gone too far in terms of what you're wanting, what you're wanting to do. I think it would, I think it would be a mistake. If I thought you were trying to do this as quickly as you could and didn't really care how it looked, it would be different. But I sense that you're, I sense that you're making a concerted effort to restore the house. And if, again, if I knew of a product that I could, that I had ever seen in my years of doing this, that I thought would hold up and remain aesthetically pleasing, I would be willing to compromise to do that. I just don't think it exists. And you, and unfortunately, there's, the only way for you to know that is to put something on there and then find out that, there's just nothing in that market that will hold up to the kind of ultraviolet light this is going to get from a west exposure. It will break down. And I really, I mean, I'm not objecting to it. I don't object to it for any reason other than the fact that I just don't think it's going to, I think it's going to be a distraction to an otherwise beautiful restoration if you do that. And, and, you know, it's like every project I've ever done in my life, the only thing I saw was something that I didn't do right.
Did wrong.
That's the one thing that every time I looked at it, I saw that every time. So Jim, Jim, together, we've got about eighty years of experience in restoration. I've got half of it, I know.
I've got the other half.
And we've seen, we've seen a lot of restoration projects and looked at a lot of material and dealt with a lot of technology changes. And part of what we're here to do is to give you the best advice and information that we can possibly give you.
Well, I will take it.
Yeah, okay.
If we could pull that picture up that I have on the monitor, I just want to make sure that I understand it. Are we talking about the gable to the front porch and the side porch on the west side?
Yes.
For, is it ten standing seam metal roof? Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And it passes.
Mr. Chair, the next item, I think, is the fish scale. You're going to be removing all of the vinyl covering, metal vinyl, whatever that is up there, around your entire house?
That's our plan. I suspect we'll go sort of on a section-by-section progression because we don't know what's under there and if we find more surprises, we'll just want to have limited sections open.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that the original fish scale you hope to leave, and I'm assuming if you find some that are damaged, you might move from another section of the house.
Or replace.
Or replace. I think you'll find that, you'll probably have to replace the whole section to do it or you rob a one section, the sacrificial area to put it all in the more prominent, like the north and the side elevation there, the east, the west elevation. You might take it off the other side to move around so those two sides are consistent because you'll never match it exactly. It just doesn't happen. And I have to tell you, I can't really tell in the photographs if they're true rounded edge.
They're not.
Are they dog-eared?
They are.
That's what I was concerned about. So it's not, even the sample you have is not correct. That sample there is not, that's fish scale, that's rounded.
It is.
Whereas the original siding is dog-eared.
Right. It's what they offer in fiberboard. And until we found this, this section on the side of the house, we didn't know what it looked like. And really, I guess if we can't restore this, I would like to replace it with something that's going to be a maintenance, consistent maintenance and product. I'm not really interested in spending all the money I would have to redo the house to repair large sections of trim.
In trying to get my hands around this, so you're going to take all the siding, the vinyl, the later vinyl or metal siding off and you're going to expose what's there, but then you're going to take off all of the normal clavards off completely, all the trim coming off the house?
That's.
And going back with cement board?
Yes.
And so it'll have just the regular clavards with, will it have the same exposure?
It will have the same exposure.
Same exposure. And then you hope to keep the dog-eared pieces and if you don't have enough, you want to go back with fish scale because it's in a cement fiber style.
Right. But I really hope that that isn't going to be necessary because this, the trim is beautiful.
I think I overheard you saying on the east porch that we talked about putting back a low-slope or flat roof, that you found some fish scale.
Mm-hmm. But it's going to be exposed.
Well, see, I'm wondering if that is your sacrificial area to replace it on the front and the west side because that's your side street. That may be the area that you grabbed from to finish those two more predominant sides because you have a side street and a front street. That might be where you robbed that section to fix that and then you put something else back. Now, the question is, would you want to go back with siding, clavards, instead of a rounded fish scale?
Oh, I wouldn't want to put a rounded next to the.
I wouldn't want to put a rounded but next to the dog ear, even if it turns ninety-degree corners, I wouldn't want to do that. I would, I would myself put back in siding and maybe someday, someone might make a locked-eared shingle, cement board to do that. But, so the understanding is you're replacing all the siding with new cement fiberboard and the trim as well. And from what the samples that we've seen submitted to us, just so everybody's on the same page, because we've been through this before, is that this has a textured or weather finish to it and not the smooth finish.
Well, we want the lap to have the smooth finish. This was only available in the textured. And we, I felt fine with that being the contrast element, but hoping again that that won't be an issue. But the lap siding will be smooth.
All the lap siding and all the trim will be smooth and you hope to reuse the dog-eared existing shingled section that's running around the building. And if you have to rob one section, you'll do that, put on the front and the side. And the other side, you'll put, you'll infill with smooth-finished siding.
If there's a huge section with nothing there, I'm sort of messed up, but so far we're looking okay.
I'd love to make a motion for what I just said.
You stated that well.
Let me ask you a question since I may have to go look at this.
Sure.
Is there going to be a mixture? Is there going to be two different kinds of fish scale siding?
No.
There won't be, okay.
She's going to only have one. It's either going to be, my hope is that, and I'm hearing you, it's your hope too.
It is my hope.
And I really hope you stay with the dog ear just because it's original.
When I saw that.
Yeah, it's kind of wonderful. The motion is to remove all of the siding, the vinyl and/or metal that's there, including, as I understand, the eaves and everything. You're taking all of that off and you're going to take all of the trim and siding off. And you're going to put back smooth-faced clavards of the same exposure or weather. You're hope to reuse, and y'all correct me.
Yeah, I'm.
You're going to reuse the existing wood dog-eared shingles, that's that band course between the first and second floors. And if you need to take, because you have deteriorated sections of that, you will take it off a less important side. I'm offering, suggesting the east side where that flat roof porch has now just been permitted. You'll take it off there to fill in those holes. And if you. And if you need to, you will then take those remaining shingles off. You might keep those then for repairs later on. And you'll put in smooth clavard of the same exposure as the rest of the house.
That is our plan.
And this is all four sides. That's my motion.
Should give that print.
Ms. Davis, do you have that motion?
It's going to be a progression, a progression.
Just call me. I'll go through it again.
Over and over again.
Everything sounding right?
I need a second.
Yeah.
A second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, one thing that you didn't bring before us is like gutters and downs pouts. Are you going to be adding gutters and downs pouts?
The gutters are going... Well, that's where I was starting, actually. We started with gutters to get the water away from the house so that it would be protected. And so the gutters are going in now.
Are you putting back what's there now? Are you changing what's there now?
We're...
The style?
Well, it's a larger gutter.
It's a larger type.
It's a larger gutter.
Is it an OG face or half-round? So basically, you're slightly larger than what you have now, but it's an OG face. It's what I would call a modern OG face gutter. And rectangular downs pouts, which is what you have now, at least in these photographs?
Yes.
Okay, so that's just... I would say that's an administrative approval. You're just replacing what's there. I have no concerns. I just want to make sure we talked about that because I didn't see that. The next item, I believe, are the issues of the windows that you want to replace. The certain... Could you review for us again the windows that would be replaced with you?
The large window that faces Main Street, it is not an original. The glass that is in there now was the victim of a keg accident several years, 30 years ago. So it's not original glass. So we want to make it the same style, double-hung wood, just one that...
It's shown on the monitor.
One that has more noise dampening and UV protection. And the windows facing Main Street upstairs and facing University upstairs would also be changed for identical-sized wood double-hung windows. But the downstairs windows facing University all have the nice old glass in them. And our proposal... Actually, I think we had an amendment to the proposal. After measuring the size of the windows and seeing how large those old panes were, we actually looked into wood exterior storms to be mounted inside the frame to actually give the glass some protection because they're on the street side of the house. And they're really large panes of glass. And they're also Marvin.
But the appearance of... If I'm understanding that the appearance, as we look at the house now...
Look at this, Tom.
Now they have aluminum storm windows.
So you're suggesting you're going to keep... It says interior storm windows.
Right, and that's what we had thought of doing. But then, when we looked at the size of the glass panes in our window, just the vulnerability of those large pieces of glass, we looked into that some, and the recommendation was for an exterior storm, again, just for protection of that glass. But it would be also a wood...
It's a wood storm window.
A wood storm window that would fit inside.
So in the packet we received, there's two sketches, which the M's are for new replacement Marvin windows, and the ISW, which was originally standing for interior storm window, is you're keeping the sash, but you're putting an exterior wood-framed storm window. So that side facing University, say for the one you're going to... We're going to come to in just a minute about the kitchen window. You want to just put a wood storm window over those, and the rest are going to be replaced with Marvin windows of the same configuration and everything. And are these insulated glass windows, the Marvins?
They are.
Are you aware that there is a class action lawsuit against Marvin for rotting wood and trim?
No, but I'll look into it.
There is. I mean, if you go on the Internet, you can find it now. Of course, that famous commercial where the girl shows up and her French boyfriend shows up. He's obviously not French. You can't believe everything you see on the Internet. Let's just first say that. But there is a class action on the Internet. There appears to be a class act... What are the legal terms? There appears to be. There may be. I don't know. A lawsuit against them for rotting wood. I would...
I'll look into it.
Please do. Because I would hate for you to go this long and find this out.
A very good reputation and a very good representative in town, so I'll...
It's alleged to be there.
Right.
So I think that's the word I was looking for. It's alleged.
I know there are several houses on Main Street that have those same windows, and those performances have been good from what I've checked into them.
I don't want you to experience their problems, my reason.
I do not want any, any new problems.
Are you wanting to keep one window out of this project?
I wanted to address, for me, that the difference was you want... Everything else about it, you're trying to go back with what's there. The only thing about the Marvin windows, I don't know if you're getting a renovation kit, and it has the jam liners and has the spring in them, and you see the plastic?
Aren't those all there?
Or is it just the sash you're putting in?
The sash, aren't they all being rebuilt around? It's just the window inset, and everything else will be built around it in wood.
So everything you'll see is wood. There'll be no vinyl and the jams?
Yes, no vinyl, no vinyl. And one of the reasons is that we... When the house... When they've done some renovation inside the house, the... We've had closets that have built in around where the weight system is. And so we can't even really access them to rehab them. And now we can't raise and lower them, and that is the university side of the house, and that gets the most noise for us. And it's also the most difficult to access for work. And we thought by using those windows upstairs, we'd have the look. We would have some noise reduction, and we wouldn't... We'd actually be able to use them because now we can't and we can't access the weights and pulley system to rehab them.
I guess my question of the window that you referenced and that I mentioned earlier was you wanted to make the one that appears to be at your kitchen cabinets the same size as the others. And I guess... I mean, I understand wanting to make it larger. I don't know if you have cabinets that would be in front of that window. You'd have to build a pocket in front of it to get the window deeper.
Well, what... Those windows were put in to be above a sink.
Yes.
And what we want to do is change the configuration of the kitchen so that it's a straight galley, and we'd have nothing in front of that window. And we would just have a window that would be...
Is that an original window?
No.
It's not an original window. Is it an original opening?
Now, that I don't know until we look. I don't know. Haven't seen that. I think that kitchen has been in the house as long as the fraternity was in it.
You may be able to figure that out when you take the vinyl off.
I think we'll learn a lot when we take that vinyl off.
I guess just for me, although I can appreciate that, I really do. It's just that we're changing then the appearance of the house, and I just wonder if that is such a... Unfortunately, it's an exposed elevation because of the side... You're on a side corner lot.
I felt like it made the whole appearance of that house look better. It looks more consistent. It looks more correct to me than to suddenly have these two small, smaller, shorter windows.
And I would acknowledge there are like... It appear to be four-over-four sash where everything else, at least on that level, is one-over-one.
So we were trying to follow through with the size of the windows all around the house. We just thought that would be a nicer look to go back with something that looked traditional rather than to try to recreate a replacement window from potentially the '70s.
Is it fair to say that when you take the siding off, if you discover that there was another window there previously? I mean, you won't... But you'll see it in the framing or perhaps in some patching of the siding material down there, that if you saw that it was something other than what you're proposing to put in, that you likely would put in what the evidence suggested?
That's what I would think we would do unless it ends up going behind kitchen cabinets or something we have that would...
But the contrast is that is if they don't find any evidence, it will go back the way it is, or will be made larger? And if it always was this size, do we want to push for it staying this size or getting bigger?
I don't think it's... I can't imagine that it would always... That it would have been like that. I mean, I would be amazed to find out that that window's original.
Well, especially that's four-over-four. But for me, too, I don't really have a problem with that one because, I mean, I'd rather, you know, we're asking them to replace the metal roof on the front porch. That is more important to me than this window being made larger. I don't really have a concern, but I wanted the Board, the Commission, to see that it is indeed a change over what we see now.
Right.
That's not the reason for spending any time on that issue, is that it is a change.
From my point of view, and again, it's just an opinion, I have no concern about what you are going to do with that window. I'm satisfied that you're going to... It's going to look right when you're done and that if you find evidence that you'll do it, and frankly, what you propose is much more suitable to me. I know that window is not right in that house. So I don't have a problem with that at all. Okay. Do any more questions about the windows? We'll be voting on all of the windows as one application. Need a motion.
I move to approve the replacements of the windows as described in the proposal.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Is that it?
That's all the issues, was it not?
I mean, there's consolidating the electric boxes, but I don't think that can be any kind of an issue.
They did know about the painting, but we don't really vote on paintings. So I just would encourage you to find the best windows you can that are going to live the longest there. I hope you can find the Marvin... Maybe Marvin is corrected, whatever the concerns have been by the public. But I just hate to see anybody invest in windows because they're not cheap. That you find a material that either the wood itself... Now, sometimes they promote finishes, you know, being long-lasting. But I would encourage you to find a wood that's also a species of wood that has natural decay resistance. About the wood itself to help you out because I just would hate to see you put them in, and then a few years, you've got to replace them.
No, I don't. I don't want to put new windows in and put new ones in in nine more years.
Robert, I don't believe we have to review consolidation of the weatherheads. That's a codes issue, electrical codes issue.
Yeah, it's a building codes issue.
Yeah, we have no... You can have our blessing with that.
It used to be several apartments and stuff.
I'm sure. Okay.
But I would love to say how much the city appreciates the effort you all are making restoring your house. It's a wonderful house. I always look... I always, when I drive by, look at it. It's a wonderful house.
It is.
And I appreciate the way that you're applying yourself to doing this, to go in the extra miles to...
Yes, thank you.
It's a huge, huge boost, shot in the arm to the district to see somebody come in and do what you're doing. And so, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, do we have any staff reports or other business?
The only thing I have is I had... I added the election of officers, which is supposed to be at this meeting. I neglected to put in a written form that we were going to have election of officers today. So at the next month's meeting, we should be able to elect officers. I'm supposed to give 30 days' notice, which should be done in May. So before we meet, before we actually start the meeting, we can elect the officers, and that'll take place before the meetings, which would be in July meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting.
So the requirement's 30 days, so we can't do it in this called meeting on the metal... We have to... No, we're doing administrative approval on the metal roofing.
Yeah, surprise of matter.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
All right. Anything anybody else wants to say or bring up?
Do we need to establish a nominating committee?
We have done that in the past.
Didn't we stop doing that last year? I thought we... I know we have in past years, but I thought that we just had nominations from the floor and voted the last time or two.
Okay, so be aware that the next meeting will be elections of officers.
So show up, you're elected. Anybody that doesn't show up, you're being elected.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.